Edition of the City of Bend's Accessibility Advisory Committee. Today is Thursday, May 26th in the year 2022. And I will call the meeting to order at 1:04 PM. Also, just wanted to announce too that this COBAC meeting is also live streaming on YouTube. So hopefully we get a lot of hits and can bring in some additional revenue, right? And then we'll just do a quick call to order. I am Nicholas Raiden, go by he/him/his. And I'm Chair of COBAC and an architect at BLRB Architects. And then I'll turn it over. John is unable to attend today. He's not feeling well, and so I'll turn it over to Cory.
Hi Cory, I'm a COBAC member. I work at Central Oregon Land Watch and I've been on COBAC for a couple of years.
Okay, we'll turn it over to Amanda.
Hi, excuse me. I'm Amanda Hemmer. I'm the Executive Director of Diversibility Inc. and I've been with COBAC for a few months now. Who do we have here?
Teresa, I have to get off for a second. I need to help Karen.
That sounds good. All right, Winnie.
Okay, Whitney Bennett. She/her/hers pronouns. I'm COBAC member, new. It's my second meeting that I made it to, and I'm the Safe Rest to School Coordinator at Commute Options.
Awesome. Thank you. And I believe that's all that we have on our COBAC committee this month. Is there anyone else that I missed that may not be seen as part of the panels? Okay, then we'll go ahead and proceed into our next order of business, the land acknowledgement. Teresa.
Thanks, Nick. All right. So I'm going to have the opportunity this month to read the City of Bend land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge that the beautiful land known as Bend, Oregon, north of the Columbia River, is the original homelands of the Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs. The Confederated Tribes ceded this land in the Treaty of 1855 while retaining regular and customary hunting, fishing, and gathering rights. The Wanalama, Wasco, and Northern Paiute people inhabited this area in certain seasonal times that clearly established their presence. It is also important to note that the Klamath Trail ran north through this region to the great Salilo Falls trading grounds. This trade route expanded the impact of commerce between tribal nations. We acknowledge and thank the original stewards of this land. It is our hope that guests continue to honor and care for this land.
Awesome. Thank you for that, Teresa. We will go to our next item on the agenda, which will be approval of minutes from our April 28th regular meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review it? And if so, does anyone want to make a motion to go ahead and approve those minutes?
Nick, I'm sorry. Do we have enough people to vote to approve?
I believe so, based upon our revised charter.
Okay, well, this is Cory and I will move to approve those minutes.
And this is Amanda and I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor, aye? All opposed? Meeting minutes from April 28th are hereby passed unanimously with the members present. Okay, we've got a couple of people on the call from the public. So in our agenda, item number four is a public comment period. And so it looks like we have two individuals on, Carl Burnett and then Rachel Zachem on the call. Is there any comments that you guys would like to make at this time?
Let me go ahead. Carl, if you would like to make a comment, I'm going to go ahead and unmute your microphone and you'll have two minutes.
Hello, I don't have any comments. I'm just here to listen. I just learned about the committee recently and I am a Bend resident with a disability. And I've also applied for a membership on the committee.
Thank you, Carl. Rachel, I see your name next. I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. You will have two minutes to talk.
Hi. Can you hear me? Okay, good. I don't have any comment either. I'm just, I'm Rachel Zachem. They're missing an E in there. But I work for Cascade East Transit and my colleague Ashley Mohini used to serve on this committee. And I've been interested in, you know, sitting in and seeing what it's about and what I can learn now that we no longer have any representation on the committee.
So much, Rachel. Nick, that's everybody that I see in the attendees list.
Same here. Thank you, Rachel and Carl, for joining us today. And if you have any comments, we also, after our business and several other components, there's a chance for you to provide additional comments or raise any questions towards the end of our agenda. Okay, moving on to number, item number five on the agenda is the COBAC business. Currently, myself and John don't have any business items, but I'll turn it over to Teresa to talk about recruitment update and the stipend update.
Thanks so much for that, Nick. I'll be fairly brief. Just wanted to let y'all know. You've seen my emails, Recruitment for COBAC Membership. It is ongoing through the end of the day tomorrow. So if you know anybody who might be interested, please consider passing along the application information. We are tentatively hoping to do the interviews in mid-June with appointments hopefully taking place with Eric's approval. The last meeting in June, the only meeting in June, excuse me. As far as stipends, so the final reading of the change to city code to allow stipends for committees and commissions took place on May 4th. Right now, we're in a policymaking process where my manager Anna is working to finalize exactly what the language will be around stipends for committee and commission members. So look for more information coming on that probably in the next couple of months. As that is something that directly affects all of you, I do want to pause for just a second and see if there are any questions. Okay, if you do have questions, feel free to send me an email a little bit later. And then I think, Nick, we had talked about maybe probing folks a little bit. Do you want to lead the discussion about whether or not other folks have business?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you for those updates, Teresa. We also want to open up this time for if any other of the COBAC members have any other business items to add during this time. And just to get some initial feedback from the committee on anything that's front on their mind or they see as some business that COBAC needs to take. Does anybody have any thoughts or ideas or questions?
Hi, this is Amanda. I'm not sure if this fits in this area or not, but I have a team working on a Conference of Resource website. And I'm thinking that we can probably add this, like, COBAC to that or something relating to COBAC, like, you know, a link to the membership or something like that on the resource, on the resource page for adults. Right now, the focus for the website is on the community of individuals experiencing intellectual and developmental disabilities with the intention to expand to the greater diversibility community. But I'm wondering if that's, I don't know how that would look, but maybe there's a discussion to be had around, like, if we put COBAC on as a resource, does that make sense? If it makes sense, what would that look like? Would it look like a link to, you know, the COBAC website? I don't know.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, I'm not quite sure about that either. I think we can, yeah, I think that's a great idea. And to just to provide an additional resource for COBAC to.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was thinking. So, okay, well, I'll look into it and then maybe I'll share at the next meeting what that could look like.
Okay, excellent. Yeah, I think that would be great. And we can add that when we talk about our agenda for next month's meeting. I think that would be a great thing to add. So we'll bring that up here. Thank you. Anybody else? Whitney, Cory? For COBAC business? Okay. Excellent. Well, that wraps up our item number five on the agenda. Next up is item number six, which is the pedestrian master plan discussion. And we have Karen Sworsky, I said that right, she/her. And she is an associate planner at Kittleson and Associates. Welcome, and it's all for you now, sorry.
I want to start with first making sure that you guys can hear me, okay? Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
I'm on a borrowed computer using somewhat unfamiliar technology because evidently Microsoft had some kind of national breakdown this morning, which seems to mainly have affected my computer. So I have to apologize. I had some links in this slideshow and some other information that I'll have to provide you separately because I can't access it right now. But my name's Karen Sworsky. I work for Kittleson and Associates. And until about a year ago, I worked for the City of Bend. Happy to see Barb Campbell on this committee because she was responsible for the fact that this work is happening. We did a, I guess you can go to the next slide. So this is, I just want to, I've only got like 10 slides, so don't worry. It's not a long presentation, but I wanted you to kind of get a sense of why we're doing this project, what it is, and how you can help. That's the main stuff. So the next slide is, this explains why we're doing it. So we did a transportation system plan for the City of Bend. It was adopted in the fall of 20... Now I get confused. Was it 2021 or 2020? Barb, do you remember? Anyway, it's been adopted for some time. One of the elements of a transportation plan is a pedestrian plan. So when we use the word pedestrian to encompass basically anyone who is not in a vehicle, a motor vehicle or on a bicycle. So and what we discovered when we were doing the transportation plan for the city is that we didn't really know what we had and what we didn't have beyond presence and absence of sidewalks on mainly collectors and arterios. So we didn't have the kind of inventory that we really needed to create a network of really accessible and usable, safe and comfortable facilities for people who are walking or using mobility devices. We just didn't know enough. So in the transportation plan, what we did was say, one of the first projects the city needs to do after it adopts the plan is to dive into what is needed for pedestrians. And we decided we wanted to take a slightly different approach. As you're probably aware, what happens at the city now is we tend to do projects where people make a lot of noise or where something awful has happened. Like there's been, someone's been in a crash where a pedestrian has been hit. And so we do, we're very reactionary, I guess. And so the idea was, let's take a bigger look at what we know about the City of Bend and see if we can identify where in the city the areas of greatest need are. And then do that, identify the gaps. And from there, do an inventory and list and prioritize key projects. So that when the city gets money, finds money, or creates money for pedestrian projects, we're not reacting. We've got a list of projects that everyone agrees are really important. And that's how we'll spend our money going forward. So we're just beginning this project. I guess you can go to the next slide. And, oh, I wanted to say, first of all, Sharice is on our project management team. So she can be your connection to this project as it goes on. It's about a year and a half project, long project. So what we're doing now is we're collecting all the data, and we have quite a bit. And so this list is, these are things that we actually have in maps, in GIS or some other format that we can convert to a layer in a map. So that the important thing is to realize, these are all layers. The first thing is, where do we know that we have sidewalks and we don't? So that's step number one. The second is to use this thing that we use, we've used classically for cars, but it can also be used for all kinds of transportation analysis. And that's called these analysis zones. And if anyone is interested in seeing how the city's broken up into these TASs, I'm happy to provide you with a map. But it includes, inside each one of these, they're kind of an attempt to create polygons that are somewhat homogeneous or separate from each other. And so inside of each one of those, we know how many jobs and how many housing, how many dwellings there are. So how many people are working and how many people are living in each one of these areas? It's really useful for when you're trying to figure out where people are starting from and going to, if that makes sense. And we also have a lot of information. City's done a bunch of work on school walksheds and park and recreation has done some really outstanding work on park walksheds. Mostly those are areas within a half mile of parks and kind of inventoried where the barriers are to being able to walk to those, to schools and parks. We know where our transit routes are, particularly the proposed high-capacity transit routes in the future. And then you may have heard discussion about hubs. And these are going to be locations throughout the city where you hopefully will be able to get off one bus and onto another without having to go back all the way to Hawthorne Station. And also where you'll have facilities for what we call last-mile travel things, like maybe electric bikes or maybe rideshare facilities or something so that you can get home from the transit station and you don't need to drive. We have a lot of data on safety, a lot of which you guys have probably seen, crash locations. We know stuff like how many lanes a road has and what its posted speed are, which of course influences how walkable the environment is. And then we have this really interesting set of data that the state's been providing us that I'm going to talk about just a little bit more on the next slide. Transportation Disadvantaged Population Index. Are you guys familiar with that? Is that a new term? Yeah, you've used it. Okay. I see Whitney nodding. The next slide. So this is what's in the Transportation Disadvantaged Population Index. And it's based on this thing called the American Community Survey. So it's basically census kind of data. And it tells us where we have concentrations of older people, younger people, where we have our non, our limited English speaking proficiencies, where our low or income populations are. We even have data about which households don't have a vehicle, where folks with disabilities are living, and crowded households, which is often an indicator of some economic stress. So we have these maps and I will say, they're statewide data and they're based on the census. So we want to test them for accuracy and also to make sure the people who live in Bend agree with this data. And so it's a kind of a perception thing as well. Next slide. So this is where I was going to link to my fancy math examples and show you our transportation disadvantage map and show you what's starting to happen. Instead, I'm going to have to send them to you separately and just talk about what they are. But what we are starting to do is layer all that information, plus a bunch more that was in those previous slides. And on the map, when you start to see these, all these things get layered, you start to see what I'm calling bright spots. Or there's areas in the city where clearly these various sets of data start to stack up. And our assumption is that that indicates where there are areas where there's probably greater need for good pedestrian facilities than maybe in some other parts of town. And that's something that we want to ground proof. As soon as we've got these maps done, we want to take them around and show them to people and say, did these feel right to you? Are we capturing the right things? Because once we get that done and we have these quote-unquote "bright spots" or areas of high pedestrian need identified in the city, then we want to inventory them. So the next slide is, oh yeah, so these are some of the folks that we want to reach out to when we get these maps done to say, do these feel right to you, including you folks? So I probably will be bringing you back, coming back to you at some time in the summer with some maps to look at and say, do these, does this ring true to you? And we're working with Sharice and Zavi to identify other folks that we should be talking to as well and what the best way to actually reach out to them is. We're going to, we had a really fun conversation earlier today about some different ways to reach out to people. So next slide. So this is where it gets kind of nerdy and wonky, but we, there's this really awesome technology that literally, like the bottom picture there, it looks like a baby stroller. And when you roll this thing along the sidewalks, it inputs all kinds of information that we don't have right now. So it automatically gives you sidewalk width. It tells you whether it's set back or curb tight. It tells you whether or not there's encroaching vegetation. And it gives you pavement condition, which is a huge thing for sidewalks in Bend. There are many that show up as present on the map, but you know, if you try to roll along them, you're in serious trouble because they've got pavement lift or terrible spalling or whatever. So this is going to give us just a lot of information that we don't have right now. However, it's really expensive to do this, as you can imagine. So we want to try starting this process by doing the inventory in those areas that are of the highest pedestrian need first. And then eventually, hopefully, the city can do the whole, the whole city. Let's see, next slide. So once we do that, what do we do with all that information that we've got? We've identified the areas of highest pedestrian need. We know what kind of on-the-ground situation we got. Then we start to look at it with an engineer eye and say, okay, what do we need? What are the missing projects? What are the gaps? And a lot of times, it's going to be new sidewalks or rebuilt sidewalks. And most of the time, it's crossings because that's usually the biggest problem, is trying to get across some of the really large streets that we have in Bend that have lots of traffic on them. And that's where our transit buses are going to run. For example, one of the high-capacity transit routes is on Highway 20 in Greenwood. And you know what it's like trying to get across that thing. So crossings will be a big part of this. And then things like lining, lighting, lighting and signage and striping and other creative ideas that I'm sure will come out of the community as we go through this. So what we will do then is for the areas that we inventory, we will create complete project lists. And the projects will hopefully be somewhat prioritized. It's going to be hard to do because they're all going to be needed, but that's our goal. And next slide. There we go. That's what I just said. And then we're hopefully done with this in February of 2023. And then what will happen to this plan is it will be adopted as a support documentation to the transportation system plan. And it'll become something the city will use to make decisions about where to spend money as we go forward. And I think there's one more slide and I think that's it. Yeah, so this is how you get in touch with me. Please do, if you have any ideas or questions or you think of other people we should be talking to. You can either email me. Well, not today. Don't email me today. I can't get my email. But call me and I'm always happy to talk. And that was my presentation.
Thank you very much for that. I do have a couple of questions myself, is that the engineering aspect of how you implement those bright spots? And after you do that inventory, is the engineering, is that to take place after the February of 2023? Or is that?
No, no, I mean, our hope is that, and again, the project is a little amorphous right now because we, at this point, we're not sure how many areas of high need we're going to identify. But assuming that we identify, maybe let's just make up a number, three or four. What we're hoping to do, if we have enough budget, is inventory and create project lists for all of them. If not, then we'll get direction from the city about which ones to do first. But at the end of the project, there will be, at least for as many areas that we can get fully inventoried, there will be project lists that give planning-level descriptions of what needs to occur. They won't be engineering drawings, but they'll be, you know, so, for example, a crossing of Highway 20 may require some work like lighting and flashing beacons and advanced paint markings or narrowing of the roadway. I'm just making stuff up right now, but that's the kind of, so it'll be a planning level. Yeah.
Cool. And then now we'll get then to the city's transportation department to kind of go through, solicit the engineers needed to complete the work and funding and construction from there.
Correct. So the city occasionally has access to grant money too. And what I witnessed was a very high success rate of getting the grant money, but a kind of a scramble every time. So, oh gosh, here comes the money. What do we need? What's the most important thing to send? And so our hope is that we've given, we'll be giving the city a stress reliever. So there's a grant. We've got projects we already know. Everyone is vetted. They're highly important. We plug those into the grant. We know what needs to be done.
Sorry, Nick, did I? Okay, thank you for that presentation. I'm very, very much looking forward to those maps. I, yes, I've, I'm really excited about those. I'm wondering if with those, it's just, you know, you said that it kind of overlays. Would it, is it possible to see with, like, each population and overlay that? So you can, it's kind of interactive in some way?
Some of it are really interactive. And what I'll do- And what I'll do if you guys are interested is we'll set up and we'll, we'll get on your agenda for one of your future meetings. And I'll get the GIS guy who's the whiz bang at it and he'll show you what's really cool about these layers. And I, I didn't want to get too wonky on you, but um, it's, it's really fun and super interesting is you can weight the layers differently. So just make something up, let's just assume that the very most important thing to everyone in the world is safe routes to schools. You can turn the dial on that so it has a heavier value than any other. And, but what I'm not sure you can do, I don't know if you can break out the transportation disadvantage layers.
Okay.
I think that might be one, but I, but I'm not sure, I'm not a GIS person. I have people who are so, so much smarter than me to do that work.
Yeah.
But it'll, it'll be a fun thing, but what's really fun is that he can get that map up on the screen and you can say, well, what happens if you turn this dial and just like, oh, that's, that's interesting. So.
Yeah. So it's, it'll be possible to at least be able to see which, which of the, you know, populations are the, I mean, my guess is that they all kind of concentrate in certain areas.
Oh yeah. And you probably know where they are if you know.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's surprises though.
Oh, really?
Yeah. At least me, they were. That's why I really wanted to show you guys the maps. I'm really sorry about that.
Oh, that's okay. I'm.
Very frustrating day.
Very much looking forward to seeing them and I'm sure I will look at them plenty. So I've looked for something like that before, but I just wasn't able to kind of find it.
Well, I too. Why, so we thought, well, let's, let's just do it. Let's just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I love that. Can do. Let's just do it. Awesome. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. And I really appreciate um, your work on that. It's really important. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm excited about it too. This is probably one of the most fun projects I've worked on.
Yeah, it's great.
I have, I have a question. Um, Karen, I am, I'm curious about the sidewalk inventory piece. Actually, a couple of questions, but um, the, the presence and absence of sidewalks. Is it just that with sidewalks or without sidewalks? Or you, does it have a system in place where, because some places, there's lots of places in the city that have sidewalks, but they might as well not have sidewalks because they're so in disrepair. Is there any kind of, any kind of sys, anything that's indicating when the sidewalks are not?
Well, that, we don't know that. And, and what we, what we, all we know now is basically where there are sidewalks and where there are not. And that's mostly on the bigger streets, on collectors and arterials. We have, we have fairly good data for most local streets too, but we have, I agree with you, we, that's the thing. We have streets, I mean, I know Ogden shows that it has a sidewalk on it. And if you tried to push a baby stroller on that, your kid'd be on his face. So it's, it's, so well, that's what the technology that we're going to try this path, this baby stroller thing should give us a lot more information about, you know, we may have um, a great route for a large population of people to get to the transit stop, but the sidewalk's unusable. So then the city would figure out, you know, we have these complicated uh, rules for sidewalks where the responsibility of the property owner, Barb's heard a lot about that, I'm sure. And, and that's just frankly, to get sidewalks rebuilt on any scale, property owner by property owner is just not realistic. So we'll have to think of some creative ways to approach that, but at least we'll know which ones are um, are, are repairable.
Right. Okay. It, that's good. I wish we could take that baby stroller across the whole entire city.
Well, I think eventually we'd like to. It's just, it's really expensive, you know, as you can imagine. Those things can go about, um, they can do about two miles an hour, which is, you know, about how fast most people walk. But it, it does require a technician and the use of the equipment. And so uh, it's a little bit of an experiment for the city, but I will say the streets department's quite excited about it. So um, let, let's keep our fingers crossed that it works really awesome.
Yeah, awesome. Well, okay, then my other question is about the map specifically and how accessible they might be. Because if they're in, are they going to be in GIS and we can like see them because they're in GIS? Or similar to how the city has some of the, their maps up where they're accessible through the website, but you don't have to have GIS going?
Oh, any, anything the city posts, I'm sure will be in a, in a PDF format. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you, you know, I, and actually, I don't, I don't know. That's a really good question, whether or not this information could be um, incorporated into the city's interactive map, you know, the, what, what's it called now? I remember what it's called, uh, where you can go in and, and put in addresses. What, what's it called, Barb?
I think Nick was right. Is it Boom?
Boom, that's right. It's possible because all of the, the stuff from the transportation system plan got incorporated into Boom. So you can go into Boom now and see where all the projects are. So it's possible the city will, will do that. Um, that's not something we've talked to them about yet, but that would be, you know, in a year.
Yeah, awesome. Well, thank you. This is exciting to be able to see.
Barb, do you have a question? You have your hand raised.
I do. Thank you so much. Oh my gosh, Karen.
No, finally, right?
Oh, this has been so many years coming. I really do. I just feel like this is finally the key to at least opening the door. And then, okay, well, we at least got the door open.
You can thank Janet Ruby.
Oh my gosh, Karen. And all of the days I have just despaired that you've abandoned the city and got a Kiddlesum. No, but I can, I, I know, I completely understand that Kiddlesum has all the cool toys. That baby buggy is amazing. Oh my gosh, Karen. This is absolutely amazing. I just feel like, really, it just can help, you know, at least get us through the door. The other thing is winter, um, you know, you know that as well, you know, that's been from day one for me is what about when it snows and you have, you know, a couple of households whose sidewalk is the key to an entire area of town trying to walk. And yeah, so, oh my gosh, could not be more excited. So I guess I do, the only question I have, um, and, and the, the school shed. Oh my gosh, the park shed. Karen, I think one time I said to Hovey at MPO. I get it. Oh, Hovey, wouldn't it be, you know, if we could just get a map around the school, around every school. And amazing. So I guess that's my only question is what about the Bend MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization? Is there any place for them in this process? Ground truthing, I, I don't know, sharing information?
That's an excellent question, Barb. And frankly, I hadn't thought about it. So I will think about it. Because yeah, we get all our safety data from, from the MPO. So yeah, no, I, I, I will ask them if they, I could give, I could do a presentation and, and ask for their, their input. I think that's a really good idea.
Okay, great. Uh, thanks, thanks again, Karen. I, this is just tremendous. As, as sad as I am that you don't work for the quote, city of Bend, you absolutely are still working for the city of Bend and just appreciate you so much.
Excellent. Um, anybody else have any questions? It looks like Rachel, you have a question. You have your hand raised.
Yeah, um, I just wanted to say, Karen, that um, CET, this will be beyond helpful for us. When I've been planning the new routes in the northeast and southeast of Bend. And one of the biggest hangups was we want these routes to be ADA accessible. And there's so many important areas that are missing sidewalk. And it just makes it very difficult for us to place all of our stops where we would like to place them because there just isn't that connectivity. Um, and I'd like to just offer anything that I can provide from CET's end to help with this pedestrian uh, project. And also just curious if you guys have considered utilizing like the OSU Mobility Hub or not mobility, the the, the research there that they're doing, the transportation research to possibly do somewhat of a on the ground analysis of the sidewalk in various places. I know students, especially, you know, doing their final projects or practicums often work on cities like this or on projects like this for cities. And I'm just curious if you've reached out to kind of uh, see if that's something that could be incorporated.
Have not, but it's an, that's an interesting idea. Do you have, do you have contacts for me, Rachel, if I, if I got in touch with you about who?
Um, Eric will have those contacts. He's been pretty involved. And also if you want to talk to really Casey Berg.
I know Casey really well.
That's going to be your best bet. You can just go straight to Casey.
Okay.
Um, yeah, but I mean, for my, when, for when I was in grad school, one of my uh, cohorts did a tree um, inventory of the entire city for the city. And it was awesome and really helpful.
That, that's a great idea. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Rachel. Um, and then uh, one other thing I had just uh, was, is the planning department as part of the outreach on this as well. Just because I know that being on the architectural side, there's a lot of new development happening in the city and a lot of master plans uh, at some point. And just was wondering if, if, if uh, if that's of any use or help.
Well, yes and no. I think one of the things that are, that we're assuming, and you know, this, this comes up regularly because people are looking, well, there's all that stuff going on in the southeast and whatever. You know, our assumption is with the new standards that the city of Bend has, that new development is going to be pretty well served. It, it, but the new development is, is adjacent to old development. So you know, the connectivity from, from new master plan projects to older neighborhoods is really important. So we'll certainly be looking at that. But I think for this, and I really think uh, Nick, for this initial effort, what we're going to see is that most of the areas in town with the highest need are older parts of town. You're going to see, um, you know, I'm guessing that you'll see the midtown area, the older, older neighborhoods and, and probably the southeast because so much of that was county when the city annexed it. And so it has kind of a county-like or rural-like uh, transportationism. But I haven't, I haven't seen those maps yet. So, but yeah.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions from the, from the, any of the panelists or any of the attendees?
Please don't hesitate to give me a shout if you have a thought. You know, sometimes after something like this, you think, oh, well, are they thinking of this? Because you guys already gave me a couple of things. I'm, I'm kind of embarrassed to say that I forgot about the MPO. That is kind of embarrassing. Don't tell Tyler. And uh, yeah, so anyway, don't hesitate to, to give me a shout.
Well, thank you very much. This was, this is very exciting and uh, my architect brain really appreciates this. And with the maps, I, I, I've got maps all over the house, you know, from old, like old times and, you know, World War II and stuff. So it's, it's really exciting uh, time. And uh, and then we'll, we'll make sure to try to get you on the agenda for uh, what, I'm, I'm sure June will probably be too quick, but.
Maybe, maybe July would work. And then I'll, I'll make sure that I've got uh, Nick Gross available because he, you'll want, you'll want to say, hey, Nick, what happens if you turn the dial this way? And then he can show you. It's, it's, it's pretty fun.
Excellent. Well, thank you again. I really appreciate it and.
Thank you for your time. I really appreciate that you guys put me on your agenda and listened. Um, so we'll be back.
Excellent. Cool. Uh, moving on to our next uh, item on the agenda is item number seven. And that's uh, the review and approval of the updated COBAC Charter. And uh, for this, I'll turn that over to Sharisa.
Thanks so much, Nick. Um, so folks, with your meeting invitation, you should have had two documents related to the charter, the current one with the temporary revisions. Um, and then the proposed updated charter um, that Amanda, Ashley Moni um, and who am I missing? Amanda, Ashley Moni and John um, all worked on giving feedback on. Um, so I think you'll see a lot of interesting changes in the new version. For example, there's a whole section about language and making sure that it is um, appropriate and up to date. Um, elevated the role of COBAC as being more active than passive, driving a lot of the changes or recommendations um, at the city level and focusing more on, on advocacy, right? Not just meeting legal minimums, so you'll still see reference to ADA compliance in there. It's more about practical accessibility, right? So what is the next level? And so with that, just from a process perspective, you know, we talked about this in April. We had a subcommittee uh, forum meet early May prior to the last meeting. There was a little update at the last meeting. Um, and then via email, got some final comments and feedbacks, uh, feedback, excuse me. So with that, um, what I will say, the reason you've got two documents, I thought about trying to send out a track changes version, but enough things got moved around that it was visually really, I thought problematic. So hopefully you had some time to take a look at those documents and kind of compare and contrast. And so I'm, I'm definitely open to um, questions and I know Amanda is here. So Amanda was really heavily involved in that. Um, can answer any questions before y'all decide how you want to move forward. No questions? It's pretty remarkable. So with that then, um, the role of COBAC in this situation would be to elevate that proposed updated draft to Eric King for his consideration. Eric is aware that y'all will be sending something to him potentially today. Um, so from a process perspective, it's really a matter of, of voting. Should we, should we elevate this to Eric King or not? Um, and I think at that point, I'll step back, Nick, and let you navigate that process if that feels comfortable and appropriate.
Okay. Yep, thank you. Um, yeah, um, one thing, since we do have a light uh, uh, attendance today from our COBAC committee, I'm not sure if we want to, to wait on this or just go ahead and uh, approve it, you know, I'm open to, to um, to uh, comments on that. Uh, we just have a few others that are, are not here today. And I just want to be mindful of their thoughts and considerations for this as well. But um, Whitney or Amanda or Corey, do you have any thoughts on that as well?
The only thing I can think of is that it's just hard to determine when we'll have enough people to, you know, to vote on that, on something. So I wonder if there's a way we can, um, I know some committees allow voting by email. If we could allow that, um, I'm not sure.
Can you answer that? Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, sure. Go ahead.
Uh, so we've had previous conversations about voting via email and what is considered serial deliberation. I think this is relevant for a training we're going to have from Ian in our legal department. But I would um, I would recommend against doing voting via email. Um, and the other thing that I will say, we were, when we created the temporary changes to the COBAC Charter and included language about um, a quorum being a majority of the members present. So under the charter, you could vote um, to elevate this today if you'd like. And then the last thing that I'll say is, you know, John is not here, but he did send along a message. I asked if he had anything he wanted me to pass along. He said nothing, except I'm looking forward to getting that charter nailed down.
Um, I think that uh, well, I, I agree with Amanda that it's really difficult to know when there's going to be more people available. But um, I would feel that it doesn't, it wouldn't hurt to wait for the next one, just to see. Um, and if not, then go forward with that vote. Do you know what I mean? Like, but um, if it is something, you know, that the folks that worked on it um, feel that it's important to do, I'm not against doing it now. Um, but. Um, but that, those are my two cents. I didn't, I didn't work on it, and I really appreciate folks that did. Um, so I wanna, you know, be respectful of, of that um effort, too.
Okay.
I wonder if before, so before the next meeting, when, when Lisa sends out um all of her stuff. If um embedded in her email content um is the importance of um. Of attending so that we can vote on, on the charter. I just note for me, sometimes I'm not looking at the attachments until like right before the meeting. You know, but if I see that there's like this asterisk of something of note, um, then. Then I'll note it, but um if not, then I'm just looking at the attachments kind of right, you know, right before we meet.
Okay. That's a good point. Um, Whitney, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, just again, I, similar to Corey, I wasn't involved in a lot of the, the rewriting, but I read it and very impressed. But I do wanna just be supportive of the committee as, as a whole, and if, if everyone is, is supportive of kind of waiting till the next one. I would, I would stand behind that as well, just to make sure we give people, everyone a, a fair chance to. Um, be able to vote on it if they're gonna be available.
And Lisa and Theresa, who are we missing today? Is it just John and Ashley Schaefer?
Yes.
Okay. And if John's in support of it, um, and, and seeing the changes go forward. I think Ashley worked on it as well, right?
Uh, Ashley did not participate in the subcommittee, but she did have some feedback um when we were chatting early on in the full meetings in April and May.
Okay. Well, then, um, I think with that, I think since we do have a majority of our total COBAC membership. I think we should um uh make a motion today on this and, and vote. And then we can see, uh, we can do one of two things. We can do a motion to see if we want to um. Defer this to next meeting, and then from there, we can then do a vote. If, if we decide to vote today, we can then um. Uh, document that vote, um. Uh, if, if that sounds acceptable to, to the group.
Yeah, so voting on, um, so we'll vote on whether or not to, to vote today or the following. And then if we decide to vote today, then we'll vote and move forward. Okay.
And so would anybody like to make a motion to vote uh, uh, on this today?
I'll make a motion to vote um on whether or not we vote today on the charter moving forward.
This is Corey. I will second that motion to take a vote on whether to vote.
Sorry, I'm trying to be uh in, in line with our uh.
It's great. It's in the spirit of bureaucracy, which I am a fan of.
Excellent. Okay, well, uh, that, uh, the motion to vote on whether we vote today or defer to next week. So all those in favor of voting, sorry, my dog in the background, all those in favor of voting today, say aye.
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 So no opposition or abstaining, so we'll go ahead and uh, uh, vote on uh whether we elevate our changes to the charter. Uh, today. So would someone like to make a motion for the second bo- motion here?
I'll motion for this, the second vote, which is that we, we vote today on elevating the charter to the city manager.
This is Whitney. I'll second that.
Okay. All right. Uh, and so we'll take a vote here. Uh, all those in favor of the uh accepted changes to the charter and elevating that to the city manager, Eric King, say aye.
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 Excellent. No opposition, uh, and only I would say maybe two extensions, but I think John would vote for that. And probably Ashley as well. So uh, the motion passes and our uh revisions to the charter are hereby. Turned over to you, uh, Theresa, to uh, uh, send to Eric King for his review and approval.
Great. Thank you all for your work. Um, so just, you know, um. So you know, next steps will be that I will work with Eric. We'll, we'll send it over hi- to him, um, probably early next week. Um, and again, he's aware that this might be coming, so once he approves it, we will get an updated draft out to everybody. And post it on the city's website. So thanks again for all of your work.
Yep. Thank you guys for all, all the work and uh, and to those who are not here, um. That's still part of COBAC and those members who uh are no longer with COBAC, um. And who participated in that subcommittee. Appreciate that and looking forward to uh having a, a more recent and updated charter. For, for the group to proceed our uh business, so. Uh, anything else on that item, Theresa, before we move on to the next agenda item?
No, thank you.
Okay, perfect. All right, um. Item number eight on our agenda um is for information on resuming water service shut off. Um, Dana Wilson, uh, she's the utility business manager here at City of Bend. And uh, thank you for uh your patience through the meeting today, uh, and waiting for uh your spot on the agenda today. And I'll go ahead and turn it over to you.
No problem. I usually head about that end of the agenda anyway, and this is shorter than council, so I'm appreciating the um. Opportunity to listen on the meeting. Thank you. Um, as Nick said, I am the utility business manager, and I will be talking about the resumption of water service shut offs. And collections that are scheduled to begin in July. I'm gonna give you a little bit of background on how we got where we are today. Some of the reasons that we're making the changes right now and the framework that we're working within. And I'll ask uh for your help at the end, just getting information out to the community. We're realizing now with uh. With, you know, kind of some converging deadlines, that um the information isn't necessarily hitting all the places it needs to hit. So, and we'll talk about that at the end. But going way back to March of twenty twenty, the city manager issued an emergency declaration. We remember the COVID nineteen pandemic that. Um, was just gearing up then, and that allowed us to suspend water service shut offs and collections. And the city did this, uh, we did this citywide for all collection activities and for customers who do not pay their utility bills. And basically, this was uh an allowance to diverge from the Oregon statute. That requires us to collect for water service and to charge all customers the same rate for service. So we have code and statute that actually um mandates that we, how we go about setting rates and collecting for services. And this order officially expired on June thirtieth of twenty twenty one. But we were in the middle of a software conversion, and uh as we went live, we were unable to generate utility bills. And uh, the utility director extended the moratorium on shut offs and collections through June thirtieth of twenty twenty two. It has taken a full year to resolve the billing issues, and we will be caught up actually um within the next week, week and a half. But because of this, and the fact that we're no longer operating under COVID nineteen emergency orders. There is no basis to keep that emergency order in effect. So we will begin or resume collection activities and water shut offs for non-payments starting July first. Uh, my numbers are a little bit outdated. Um, it's a bit of a dynamic situation, but. Um, the last number I had was about twenty-five hundred customers and about a million dollars in past due balances. We have been seeing a, a massive increase in call volumes. Um, with the billing delays and um just the hiccups in that system. What we're seeing is customers who didn't realize they were carrying a past due balance. Um, there was an auto pay issue way, way back in twenty twenty one as well. So some customers got dropped off auto pay that are now seeing bills from July or August. Um, that they didn't know were sitting out there. And so we're, we're getting that, getting through that backlog and getting that cleaned up. Um, but we, we do have a fair number of customers who just have not paid their utility bill since the beginning of the pandemic. And we don't know the reasons why people haven't paid, um, but what we are trying to do is get out. Get information out to them that this is um going to happen. Um, and then we've also set up a couple of programs that we think will help people. We've partnered with Neighbor Impact, and we have about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in utility assistance. It started at two hundred. This went up, I think. I'm sorry, I think March, so and since March, we've given out about thirty thousand dollars in utility assistance for low-income qualifying customers. Um, in addition to the low in assistance, I'm sorry, the low-income utility assistance program. We've also set up uh utility payment plans. These are available to all customers. There are no income requirements. There, it's actually as minimal as possible. Um, we had, we asked them to make a minimum payment. All payment plans are twenty-four months. This is really um rather unheard of. We don't have um code. We don't have a statute that even allows for payment plans, but we've issued, and we took it to council in April. And they approved the provision to allow for these COVID nineteen payment plans. So it's kind of another extension of um an emergency order, if you will, that uh, that's allowing us to circumvent our code. To offer these payment plans. Um, anyone on a payment plan making their payments will not be subject to wa- to shut off our collections. We do have some limitations. Uh, the deadline to apply is June thirtieth. We've been sending notifications to customers directly with past due balances. Um, we have engaged media and uh the local media, news media, and our social media. And but, but we know that this doesn't reach every customer. And so recognizing that there are certain communities that will be impacted more than others. We'd just like to ask your help in getting this information out. What we want uh the messaging to be is uh, we're asking customers to seek assistance through Neighbor Impact if they need it. Um, or call our utility billing division. We have other programs that might be able to help customers. And then if, if they don't qualify for our pa- or assistance, then sign up for a payment plan so that they can avoid um shut off. We have seen a sharp increase to calls to our customer service department. And so there is a little bit of a delay longer than what we would like to see on the daily basis, and we are seeing a lot of confusion and frustration because of that billing delay. Getting caught up, we had some compressed billing cycles. So that's uh on top of everything else, that's causing a little bit more confusion. We'd like to recognize the power of using these types of committees to get this information out, and I'm open to hearing your thoughts or questions.
Um, hi, this is Corey. Uh, I assume this is the case, and I haven't seen any of these materials, but they are bilingual. Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. And in addition, uh, that was also one of my questions, but also are you, you said you have reached out this, you've used normal old-fashioned snail mail, right? Is that, yeah, okay.
Yes.
Addition to.
Yeah, and, and we're actually looking at additional outreach, but we are, what we're seeing unfortunately right now, and I don't have a lot of data to, to provide to this group. I actually don't have any data, but um anecdotally, we're hearing that even the folks on payment plans are not making their payments. So um, we're providing additional outreach, so we're not sure how effective these are going to be in the long haul. We can't change consumer behavior, um, unless, you know, there's a little bit of a carrot, a little bit of a stick, which. We're trying as hard as we can to avoid that stick, right? We're trying as hard as we can to get every option that's allowable um by our code. Um, yeah, and, and getting the information out is really where we're, we're kind of stuck. No more questions?
Um, sorry, I apologize if I, if I missed this. Um, my dogs have been just being weird. But um, is there, is there any forgiveness possible?
Well, through Neighbor Impact, if, if a customer qualifies as a low-income, if they meet all those qualifications. They can receive uh funding, it's grant funding from Neighbor Impact. Um, but as a utility, we have statute, Oregon statute and code, so we, we can't forgive um past due balances. We need to collect for those services that we've provided.
And then do you have, if we're like, think of a good channel to use, or we're, if we have one. What is the best way for us to like, share this information? Share what, share the opportunity?
Absolutely. You can reach out to me. Um, trust you can, I don't know if my contact information is provided as part of this, but. Um, send it along email, and you can reach me by phone as well.
Okay.
Hey, sorry to be that bearer of bad news, the wet blanket of the meeting, but I really appreciate your time. Um, and I, I'm gonna log off here unless, should I stay for a public comment, or is there any? Any additional, anyone need anything else from me?
I don't see so, but I, thank you Dana for coming. So this was an equity department um discussion about how we make sure we get this information out. To folks who will be impacted and in time to be able to do something about it. So I think, you know, just as a reminder, that June thirtieth deadline, they all get here sooner than we know. So I appreciate you Dana coming to this group, and then I'll make a point to get your contact information to all the committee members um later today.
Thank you.
So, thank you Dana. I appreciate that. Um. If there's no other questions or comments on that, um, we'll go ahead and proceed to our next agenda item. Um, which is the public uh comment period. Um, uh, we have, uh, we saw Carl and Rachel on the call. Do you guys have any additional comments? Or questions uh for COBAC or related to accessibility at this point?
Can I recommend that if you do, you consider raising your hands that we can know? Right, it does look like Carl's got a comment.
Hello. Um, oh, it looks like I'm not able to turn on my video, if that's okay. Um, so. I was just wondering, I just have a general question about the committee, um, which is, I'm wondering what sort of. Power or ability the committee has to um influence or assist. With uh the accessibility of local businesses in Bend.
Um, I can take a stab at that, Carl. Thanks for the question. Um, so the committee doesn't have um ability to directly tell a business or um. To, to do anything, basically, um, but what we can do, we have a fun little award um called the Winter Access Award. Um, which is some, it's, that, that's a little, a little one that businesses have enjoyed receiving. If that, if it's in the winter and they, you know, shovel and keep um their, the, you know. Uh, what's the word I'm thinking now? Sidewalks. Sorry, I have a um word recall as part of my disability. If they keep that kind of area accessible, um, then they can get an award and be like on the news. And that, and that's really fun. I think that those sorts of things are really fun, but um, we're more. Have the ability to kind of speak to the city and city council. Um, uh, we, we report to Eric King, so we're the city manager um committee and not necessarily to the um. Council, although we do have our lovely counselor Barb Campbell here as a, as a liaison. Um, but to kind of um inform the, the way that the, that um. Codes or regulations or, or things like that can um impact um businesses. And to, to act as an educational resource when, when people want to listen. Um, so that's not the most, the most articulate thing, but um Lisa, go, go for it.
Hi. Okay. Um, yeah, the city has no jurisdictions over, you know, any of the businesses. Um, they do have to follow ordinances and things, so, but that is not part of COBAC, and what I said, um, the city of Bend has. And like I said, the city of Bend has no jurisdiction over them. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Yeah, I believe there are barrier removal requests that, that as COBAC, you know, members, we, we tend to be more mindful of that. And, and others are able to make barrier removal requests. Anyone within the city is able to do so as well. And so that's part of the accessibility department within the city of Bend. So in addition to that, we also review items that could impact businesses and the fact of like the pedestrian plan that we saw earlier with sidewalks and, and crosswalks and, and things of like that. So there is an indirect way, I suppose, that COBAC can influence that. Okay. Thank you for that Carl. I don't see Rachel's hand up for any other public comments or questions. If there's no other items for that, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is the accessibility and equity manager update by, from Teresa.
Hello, everybody. So I have a few things I just wanted to pass along to the group. First of all, we have got some fairly light agendas coming in the next couple of months. Though that sounds like it may have changed a little bit with the discussion of Karen. We would like to cancel the July meeting and give everybody a little bit of a break and then resume again in August. That being said, July is an important month for people with lived experience in the disability community. It's Disability Pride Month, ADA Celebration. So just wanted to let you all know that the city will be putting out some, some information this year. It's my understanding it's the first time. So look for some things internally for employees, but externally in social media, really talking about the disability experience. You might see a few references to the disability rights movement. I really enjoy a couple of documentaries that are related to that. So look for that. One thing that I did want to let this group know about is the city does do proclamations. So those proclamations often coincide with important social or cultural events. They're typically driven by community organizations who reach out to the city and say, hey, city of Bend, we would really like it if there was a proclamation. For example, we did one for Black History Month or those types of things. So if you know an organization that might have some interest in a proclamation for Disability Pride Month, around the 32nd anniversary of the ADA, those types of things, please feel free to have them or you reach out to me. And we can talk about what might be possible around that. On everybody's mind, probably, we're probably all about zoomed out. So I did want to let you know that we do have a plan. We're working on a plan to have hybrid meetings starting in August. We thought about July, but again, because of scheduling, there just wasn't much on the schedule. We want to give folks, the new folks, some time to join COBAC. And we're making plans, Lisa and I, working on making sure when we return to those hybrid meetings, they are accessible for everybody. So look for more information on that coming soon. And you may have noticed on the agenda that Eric and the city manager's office are not there anymore. I have worked with Eric very closely over the last couple of months. And we think it may be time to let COBAC really drive the discussions and he will still continue to come, but it's going to be on a semi annual basis now. So either Eric or somebody from the city manager's office will be back to COBAC in October. That being said, Eric definitely wants me to let you all know that if you have any feedback, any comments, any concerns, he's always available and happy to listen. So just because he's not here in person, doesn't mean that he is not here to be a support to the COBAC membership. And then the last thing that I wanted to share is that ODOT is actually doing an accessibility survey. I got this link to a survey through some contacts that I have in Portland. It does close at the end of this month. So in addition to sending out contact information for Dana, I'm going to send that out to all of you. If you have time, please consider filling it out to help guide the work that ODOT will be doing around accessibility. So those are all of the comments that I have. That said, want to be a support certainly for this committee. So what feedback or questions do y'all have for me?
I just want to share Teresa that I appreciate your leadership in in this committee and being a strong liaison between this committee and the city, which I think is super important. And also just being a strong voice for, for everyone. I think it's, it's been, it's been needed and I'm happy to have you be that for us. So thank you.
Very generous Amanda, thank you.
I agree. Thank you.
Same here, Teresa.
Yeah, thank you Teresa.
I think you, that was unexpected. If you do, if you do have things come up that are, you know, less magnanimous and thank you again, please do reach out and let me know what I can do to be helpful. Lisa and I definitely want to make sure that your time on COBAC is meaningful and where opportunities to improve accessibility in the community come up, that they're shared. So please do reach out. And if anything does come up, and I think Nick, with that, that will conclude my comments.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to our item number 11 on the agenda, which is our council members liaison comments. And I'll turn it over to, to you Barb.
Um, I don't know that I have very many comments today, you guys. Just so grateful for you. And yeah, it sounds like we'll have one more meeting before taking a break in July, which I think will be good for all of us. And I, yeah, I'm just so happy to be here. That sidewalk plan, I just cannot, I'm, I think after this meeting, I am just going straight back to bed. Cut, just on a high note, this day is over. It can't get any better. So I just appreciate you all. And Sharice, if I'm not mistaken, we have plans to interview applicants. Is that right?
Correct. Yep. The recruitment for new members and at the end of the day tomorrow. So I'll be in touch with you soon about those interviews.
Thank you. So one last day, if anybody knows of any people maybe that you've been trying to get to apply. They've got one more day and then we'll be looking at those applications and scheduling interviews. And so for me, I kind of have my eye on August as kind of rebirth of COBAC, if you will. And hopefully we'll have that opportunity to be back together in person. And we might have new members at that time. And we've got a sidewalk plan. We've got the city manager involved in that more regular way. I'm excited about that as well. So I just look forward to all of the amazing work that we're going to get done together. Thank you, everybody. And if you have any questions for me, of course, please let me know, reach out. I'm always happy to chat or have coffee or walk dogs or something.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm excited too about all the changes we've gone through, voting on the charter today, the great work everyone's done. And it's, I really appreciate everyone's commitment and, you know, we've, we've had a lot of change in the last year and a half, we'll say. But I'm excited about where we're headed and with Lisa, Teresa, with you Barb, and also with our existing and our new COBAC members. So this is an exciting time. I'm grateful for Amanda and Whitney and John joining us here in the last few months and really playing an integral role in our committee. So thank you all for that. Okay. With that, we'll move on to our next item. We're doing really well on time here. And so we'll discuss our agenda items for our June 23rd COBAC meeting. And so one of the items that we talked about earlier was the item that Amanda brought up in the new business section. And so I just wanted to see if we wanted to add that to our agenda for June.
Yeah, I think that'd be good. Does anybody else? Yeah.
Cool. I think that's great. Yeah, let's, let's add that to the agenda. And just to kind of restate that, could you just restate that Amanda? So we have that as part of that, of what we're adding to the agenda.
Yeah. So I think what I'll do too is I'll see about inviting one of my, one of the team members who's developing the, it's actually, it's launched, it's ready to go. So it's diverse, it's diversabilityvillage.org. And it's a resource website. So we can talk about it and we can talk about right now, what kinds of resources are on it? And what can, what, how we intend to move forward with it in the coming years as we kind of, what's it called? It's, we've already gone through our beta version. So we're just figuring out, focusing on one demographic and then moving forward. So just talking more about, about the website and how, and how COBAC might help provide any feedback to it and, and also offer any resources that we might have missed that, that aren't on it. So I guess between now and then, maybe take a look at the website and see what y'all think. And come prepared with maybe some resources that need to be added.
Cool. Excellent. And then I know Rachel is still on the call. You know, I know we've, we've talked about having a liaison with the transit portion. And that was always helpful to have Ashley Moni be a participant and to, to, to bring up ideas and stuff. And I'm not sure, Rachel, is that's something you want to provide any updates on as part of our June meeting as well?
Yeah, um, I'd definitely be interested in kind of taking on the role of being the liaison for Cascades Transit in COBAC. I don't really know of any agenda topics that I might have. We are just starting a survey for our mobility hub study. And I am not sure if it has gone live yet or not, but I would definitely love to share that with the group once it is live.
I think that sounds, that sounds great. Yeah, I think we can add some time to that discussion. I think that's, that's an important part of our community and being able to provide that mobility to, to everyone in the community is important. So yeah, if, sorry if I was volunteering you there, Rachel, for joining us on a recurring basis, but but if you're willing to, we would greatly appreciate it.
No, you're not volunteering me for this. Ashley and I discussed it before she left her role. So I really think it's important that we do have somebody on here. I think that, you know, public transportation is a necessity for a lot of people who are disabled or, you know, can't afford to have a vehicle and maintain it, which is a lot of people nowadays with gas and everything. And it's, you know, really interesting for me to hear all the things that you are doing, the products that are going, going on around town. Very interested in the pedestrian network assessment. That's something that from the start of working with CET, I've been kind of hoping the city was going to take a lead on. So I'm happy to attend these meetings and contribute what I can.
Real quickly, Rachel, do you have information on how to apply for COBAC membership? Or are you looking more for kind of an ex officio role?
Um, I was thinking of going with an ex officio role. Unless you guys are short applications and you, you need somebody else on the committee. I was just going to kind of stay as an ex officio.
Okay, that, I just wanted to clarify and get your resources depending on what your ability to participate looked like on a regular basis. So thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, thanks.
Lisa, you have your hand raised?
Yes, I think I will talk to, please talk to Sharice about having Amanda with this, I don't know if it's a presentation or anything, but you know, or it's kind of, I know that we don't promote, um, you know, like web links and things like that of other, unless it's affiliated with the city of Bend. So I think Sharice needs to talk to Amanda a little bit more. Yep. And then maybe get some kind of certainty on if that can be actually put on the agenda.
Are you talking about our mobility hub survey? Cause that is being.
The survey.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Yeah. So for clarification, it's more around the discussion that Amanda would like to have about having COBAC and the city of Bend identified as a resource on the Diversibility website. So Amanda, I'll reach out to you and see if we can't find a time to chat to talk about what works best. Kind of given the roles and responsibilities that the city has. Thanks Lisa.
And Barb, you have your hand up?
I, Nick, I forgot the very most important thing. We have two vacancies on city council right now. Two city councillors have resigned and we, the city council can appoint people to fill those positions until January. So if there is anyone that would like to have a little taste of city council, you would be a councillor for seven months. But that's literally what we're looking for from applicants right now. If anyone wanted to serve for longer, they would have to run for election in November. And then if they won, they would start serving a full term or two years starting in January. But the appointment would be for that seven month period. So if there's anybody that would like to apply, if you know anyone you think might be good for this, we're taking applications for another week. Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Okay. I think with that, with our agenda items and stuff, I think this is a great step for this. We'll go ahead and cancel our July meeting and pick back up in August. And then with that, unless there's anything else that any of the panelists or attendees have today, we can go ahead and adjourn today's COBAC meeting here on May 26. we can go ahead and adjourn today's COBAC meeting here on May 26, 2022 at 2:34 PM.
Thanks, everyone.